I apologize for us being a little bit late, at least we're not too bad. We find that whenever we have an executive session topic and it revolves around money, sometimes it, especially when it's your money, it takes a little longer to resolve it, but we have, so. What we're going to do is start the meeting of October 50, 2012, with a moment of silent meditation and a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, first on the agenda is a police promotional ceremony, as we all know, and it's a first, I think, for Hopkinton to have so many officers achieve such status, and I think it goes to the fine department that we have, where it's been, how it's gotten here over the years, it's just improved and gotten better and better every year. And I'd like to thank the chief for his instruction and good leadership, and our manager also, Bill McGary.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to turn it over to you, Bill.
Thank you very much. Welcome, everybody, to the police promotional ceremony. I'd just like to say, it's not that often where we have so many promotions in such a short period of time, and we don't do this like every other week. We have 15 sworn officers, and this evening we have three sergeants being promoted and also two detectives, so we're very proud of our police department, we're proud of the officers who were selected to be promoted, and without further ado, I want to turn it over to the police chief, Dave Palmer, for his introduction. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. First, I'd like to thank the town council for allowing us to have this forum here. This is the second one we've had in approximately a month and a half. I reiterate, Town Manager Bill McGary's sentiments that the fine department, and probably we're not going to have too many more promotional ceremonies, probably not at least before the new year. This should fulfill all our promotions for quite a while. I also want to thank the councilman Buck, and the town manager, Bill McGary, and the union. I know I said this before, but I think it deserves me saying it again. Approximately three months ago, we were inundated by retirements, which left us without any supervisors, and through the good work and cooperation between the union, the town manager, town councilman Buck, and we were able to come up with a promotional process that kind of streamlined the promotional process, so that, because otherwise, we'd be sitting here right now, I would, I still wouldn't have any rank there. Since that time, we have Captain Carrier in position, we have now Sergeant Percival, Sergeant Cortella, Sergeant Kenyon, we have Detective Ahern and Detective Forbes all being promoted, and this will solidify our position. I also would like to thank the town council as well, because in a department of 15, I think this is a great organizational chart that I have here, gives great supervision for the officers out there, and on their side, it gives them great morale, and the officers that we've promoted, they're round pegs, they go in round holes, and I feel very comfortable, and I'm very proud of what they've done. I'd also like to thank the Westerly Police Department, I know there's some officers here from Westerly to show their support for the neighboring town, I see that, I believe, Major Steve Baker from URI is here as well, and there may be some other officers here that I don't see here, but thank you for your attendance. I also want to thank the friends and family for being here to support your officers. With that being said, I'd like to introduce Lisa Cook, the town clerk, to come up and swear the officers in, and then we'll have a penning ceremony.
You would all raise your right hand and then swear one all at once. Do you solemnly swear that you will support, preserve, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the State of Rhode Island, and that you will execute your duties as police officers to the best of your abilities faithfully and impartially imposing all laws in accordance with zealous safeguarding constitutional rights of all persons and promptly conveying the orders of the officers pledged over you, all in accordance with the rules and regulations of our police departments and of the law?
I do. I'd like to ask Ms. Diane Nato to step forward, I'll grab you with a pen, and it's sharp, we don't mind if you poke him in the chest. I'm sure his comrades agree. While she's pinning him, I'd like to, I'd like to just give you a little bit of background on Sergeant Percival. He came on the job, went through the Rhode Island Police Municipal Academy in 2000, started in 2003, graduated in 2004. For the last three years, he's been a detective, he's been working the first shift, and he will be going to the second shift. I got to tell you, he was, while he was there, he was kind of my right-hand man while, before Captain Carrier was put into his position, he took over prosecution and being days, he's kind of a jack-of-all-trades, and he really was a big help to me during that period of time. He's got a bachelor's degree from Roger Williams University, which he obtained in 2010 in criminal justice. He lives in Westerly with another police officer, Keith Lambrecht, and a dispatcher. His significant other is Diesel, the Bulldog. I'd ask that Deborah and Megan Cortella step up. Deborah is Thomas Cortella's wife, and Megan is obviously his daughter. While they're pinning him, just to give you a little bit of background on Tom, he graduated from the Municipal Academy in 1997, he has been on the first shift for quite a while, he is going to the swing shift, which is a combination of two days of second and two days of third. He's head of our elderly affairs unit, and he's got a bachelor's degree in Roger Williams University, he graduated 2009, and he is currently working on his master's degree from Roger Williams. He lives in Westerly with his wife Deborah, his oldest daughter Deborah, correction, Megan, seven, and they're triplets, Haley, Nicholas, and Nathaniel, all four years old. He's got his hands full. I ask Kerry Kenyon to step forward, please. Bob Kenyon came on the, went through the Municipal Academy in 2001, he's been working on the second shift, he's going to third shift, which is the 12-to-8 shift. He was a K-9 officer, the K-9 is now retired, and he runs the traffic control unit. He's just shy of his associate's degree at Community College of Rhode Island, he lives in Westerly with his wife Kerry and the two children, the daughter, aged 12, Jordan, and they have a newborn baby, which we congratulate you as well, eight weeks old. The, I hope you can sleep soundly if you're sleeping during the day. I'd ask Maria Ahern to step forward. Glenn, graduated from the Municipal Academy in 2004, started in 2003, he is going to be going to first shift in detectives, he's going from the third shift. That big, big yellow thing in the sky is a son, you probably haven't seen it in a while, but he's a, he's the armor, he's one of two armors, and he has a certificate in commercial enforcement. He is just shy also of his associate's degree at C.C.R.I., and he's also been to B.C.I. school, which is a big plus for the detective division, and will actually be sending Detective Forbes there as well. Glenn lives in Hopkinton with his wife Maria and the two children, Ryan, eleven, and Emily, seven. I'd ask Kate Forbes to step forward. John graduated from the Rhode Island Municipal Academy in 2009, he has also been on the third shift, and he's going to the first shift detectives. He was our field training coordinator, he just had gone to school this past year, and he helped to coordinate the field training for the two new officers that just came on in May. He also manages the grants, the DUI, the click-and-ticket, the patrol party, and the speed enforcement. He has an associate's degree at C.C.R.I. in criminal justice, and he's three courses shy of his bachelor's at Roger Williams University. He lives with his wife Kate in South Kingston. I'd ask each officer come up and get their certificate of promotion. Before we give a round of applause to the newly promoted officers here, I want to take a minute to recognize the family members. Recently, I've got a little more empathy than maybe I had in the past for what family members deal with. I have two sons that are police officers, and over the years, I really, never really thought about what my wife and maybe my parents had gone through, and now, not that I'm a good sleeper anyways, and I wake up in the middle of the night if they're out there, I got to tell you, I have newfound empathy for all of you that are out there, so I want to give you all applause. With that being said, our new officers here are, in my opinion, the best of the best, they've deserved everything they've gotten here, it was a long process for them, and well-deserved, and with that, we give them applause, but before we do, I just want to announce that the union has reserved the pavilion restaurant for anybody that wants to go down there after the ceremony here, and hors d'oeuvres and some soft drinks, and they're having soft drinks, I know that. Thank you very much, everybody, and thank you for coming.
Okay, well, I'm going to beat the recess while we clear out.
I don't know, I checked with them. When's the deadline? I don't know if she wants one, because I can bring her up here, but I, when's the deadline, tomorrow? Give me one, and I'll give it to her.
Yeah, go get it now, cookie time.
You're not going to get a lot of mine. I left that in the house, and I was going in, and I thought I got the whole group of them, and I left this.
Oh, Lisa has an extra package?
No, but I'm going to cheat you.
Okay, all right. Yes, just wait for Lisa to get that.
Thank you.
Danny's here! I've been trying to reach you for like a month. He's supposed to give me your telephone number, somebody else was supposed to.
I haven't got you?
No, not yet.
Oh, wait a minute, I'll give it to her now. Just a sec, do you?
Yep, just a second.
742?
5101.
All right. Okay, we will resume. First thing up is the consent agenda, is there anything to remove from the consent agenda?
October 1.
Anything else? Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
A motion to approve the consent agenda as written, except for the town council meeting minutes of October 1.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, October 1st.
Page 5, Zoe? There wasn't any motion or second name on top of page 5?
Oh, yeah, they didn't list the councillors.
See, please? Top of page 5? The names, there wasn't any names for the motions?
Anything else?
Nope.
Barbara, do you have something?
Yeah, I do. On page 7, same problem on page 7, a motion was made by councillor and seconded by councillor. Needs to be. Right, exactly, good, invisible councillor. I do want to add something to the discussion with Mrs. Gardner. Doc Gardner, putting her on the audit subcommittee, that she also stated that if we found a person more qualified than herself, she would step down. I'd just like to have that added to the minutes, she said the same thing at the school board meeting, I thought that was really very nice of her.
Is there anything else? Is there a motion to approve the October 1, 2012 council meeting minutes?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
First, the first public forum, is there anyone wishing to speak at the first public forum? Nope, okay. If it's all right with everyone here, I'd like to move something up under new business, I'd like to move the resolution for the Westerly Hospital up, that we would deal with it right now, is that all right with everyone?
I'll make the motion.
I don't know that we need one, do we, to move it?
I thought that's how we had to do it.
Okay, okay.
I'll make a motion to move the proposed employee contractual, oh, where did you have it?
It is considered.
A motion to move Westerly Hospital up to public forum.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Tom Legore's here, would you come to the microphone? Thank you.
Hello, it's always wonderful to be back here in this familiar meeting room. As you may or may not know, I was among a group of citizens that were appointed by Judge Stern to serve as a committee within the receivership, the Westerly Area Residents Committee, and what we're here for this evening is to ask you to pass a resolution which has been forwarded, which would request that the Attorney General and Department of Health not only grant expedited consideration to the Conversion Act application of Lawrence Memorial Hospital to acquire Westerly Hospital, but also to, not only give the formal grant, but also to, in fact, expedite that consideration. As you know, Westerly Hospital is a, I think, key element in our region for quality of life issues with respect to health care, but it's also an important economic development engine, and there are tens of residents of Hopkinton and all the surrounding communities that are employees at the Westerly Hospital, and that's what really, we thought as a citizens' committee, was the critical aspect to bring to the fore with respect to the court and state officials, that we could not afford, and we did not want to have occur in our communities, the languishing four-year process that occurred at Landmark Hospital, and it is still in jeopardy. But here, we have a good, strong purchase and sales agreement with Lawrence Memorial, it's accepting all of the hospital's debts, it is committed to an infusion of $6.5 million in immediate cash with respect to capital improvements, and then $30 million over the next five years, maintaining all lines of service for two years, and maintaining the hospital as an acute care facility for at least five years. And there are some exciting other prospects with respect to their plan, which we think and hope will provide us as citizens the ability to make the hospital successful, because in the end, the real issue is that we use it, or if it's underutilized, it can't
Yeah, no, I just hope this, hope this resolution helps you facilitate that purchase more, you know, quicker than Landmark. Jeepus, four years and running.
Right.
But, uh, I, sir, hopefully, hopefully, well.
Yeah, our, our goal is to do everything we can to spur sale and completion by January.
Yeah, I support the resolution, sir.
I think that not only is it important as a hospital, but it truly is important for all the employees, the doctors, the nurses, the staff. Uh, it is a huge, um, economic engine, and so I really do hope you can get that done very quickly. It'll make a lot of people have less stress and therefore not be at the hospital.
Exactly, Barbara.
Well, they talk about golden hours, and they're precious minutes when people have heart attacks, so they need to get into Wesley Hospital as soon as possible. They don't have time to head to Wakefield, or, or, or into Connecticut, or, or north to the, to the city, so.
I just have one quick.
It's vital.
Does, does Lisa have one for us to sign tonight, or if it does pass?
I don't have as much.
Oh, okay.
Mm-hmm. Is there a motion?
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, let me read it. "A resolution urging swift review by state regulators of Wesley Hospital conversion application. Whereas Wesley Hospital is a critical, important provider of high-quality, easily accessible healthcare to residents and visitors to the area. It has traditionally served, and whereas Wesley Hospital is critically important to the economic vitality of the area, it has traditionally served. And whereas since December 7th, 2011, Wesley Hospital has been operating on a court-ordered special mastership. And whereas the special master has negotiated an asset purchase agreement with respect to the assets of Wesley Hospital with LMW Healthcare Inc. and LMW Physicians Inc. This agreement is guaranteed by the Lawrence Memorial Hospital Corporation and allows Wesley Hospital continue to provide high-quality, easily accessible healthcare services. The agreement also ensures that Wesley Hospital will continue its existence as a financially stable, acute-care community hospital and ongoing contributor to the area's economic vitality. And whereas the Rhode Island Superior Court has approved an asset purchase agreement subject in part to the successful completion of the Rhode Island Hospital Conversion Act process. Resolve that the Hopkinton Town Council hereby requests that those departments, agencies, and officers of the state of Rhode Island charged with the responsibility to administer the Rhode Island Hospital Conversion Act do so on an expedited basis. This process should be administered consistent with the objectives of the Act and mindful of the importance of such approved to healthcare needs of the area traditionally served by Wesley Hospital in its important contributions to the area's economic vitality." Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for coming out.
Thank you. Thank you, and congratulations on your meeting. That was a wonderful start.
Okay, now we will head to the town solicitors report.
Very brave. As you can see, I'm back. Um, I want to thank Scott very much for filling in for me. Scott was back while I was, um, out getting my new knee. Um, I never anticipated that I'd have to miss three meetings, but that's the way it worked out. Um, it should be a smooth sailing from this point. Um, thank you, council members, for being so patient about it and for, um, welcoming Scott. So he had a wonderful time. He really did. He enjoyed it very much. It's very different than his planning board stuff. And, um, and he enjoyed coming down, and, and thank you very much for welcoming him and taking good care of him. Um, and thank you for all the support you gave to me. Thank you for the cards and the notes and the emails and the calls and the Chinese dinner and, uh, you know, flowers for, it was just wonderful. Thank you to everybody, you know. The town's been fabulous to me, and I, another thank you, everybody.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Very happy to be back.
Town managers report. Bill.
Thank you. Uh, I have just one item. Uh, on September 26th, I had met with Foson O'Neill engineer Sean Martin and DPW director Tim Teft to review and discuss the timetable for the undertaking of the South Drive Drainage Project. Uh, because of the time needed for the surveying, the soil test pits, the final design, the permit application, and review work, the RFPs, the RFP, and the bid award documents, the actual construction is scheduled to take place in the spring of next year. Uh, this work will be completed through a $100,000 grant from Rhode Island EMA, uh, and we're just waiting on the final, final approval from FEMA on our hazardous mitigation plan will allow, that will allow us access to those funds.
Congratulations. Long time coming.
Barbara, how much time do you think, when they begin in spring, how much time will that process take?
Oh, that won't take long at all.
I mean, it's like, a month?
Oh, no, I would say approximately a week.
So, once they begin, it'll only take about a week's time?
From start to finish, I'd say approximately a week.
Alright, good, I can just let my citizens know, because they call. Thank you. That's great, that's just great.
Any other questions? Thanks, Bill.
You're welcome.
Uh, old business. Uh, consider, discuss the, uh, lower rate request for water, uh, for the depot square which requested by the fire department.
I would like to say that, I'd like to thank Council President Thompson for leadership on this issue. Want to say that.
You're welcome. Does anybody have any, um, Tom, you have a report to give.
Not really. I, I mean, I met with the chief. Uh, my question at the last council meeting was, why did the water increase so much? Um, we came to the conclusion that the pipe froze. So, um, by then installing the, the meter, um, prior to the fountain in the, in the fire department, that'll be, um, uh, monitored constantly. So, um, after speaking with the chief, I feel confident that that'll take care of that problem, and we won't have the, uh, issue again.
Okay, so how, how are they taking care of the problem?
Well, by, by installing that meter, now that shows exactly how much water is being used.
Well, no, I meant, how did they, they?
Fix the problem.
Fix the problem?
They fixed the pipe, where it was broke.
I, I know, but did they protect it so it won't freeze again?
The water, the water wasn't drained, and it settled.
You need to winterize it.
Need to winterize it.
Shut it off in the winter and drain it.
So, that's basically.
So that's the fountain itself? So it was inside the fountain that it happened to?
Um, just outside of it.
Just outside of it. So they solved that, when they know?
Yes.
Like Wesley does its fountain, it has to shut down.
Yeah, wind freezing the lines.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, and then they have the meter put on, so they'll now?
The meters, now that if, if a leak does occur, or if, if rainwater or something happens, it sneak in there and freezes. When they started up, I mean, I have, uh, the chief sent me numbers of gallons they've used over the last couple of years, um, so they know what they're looking for.
So who is, who's going to check it?
Um, one of the individuals who takes care of Depot Park.
Okay, so if someone specific?
Uh, yes, I would, I would think so. I mean, I didn't ask that question of the chief, but I would assume that would be the same person who's taking care of the park.
I think it would just wise to watch it for the year and just make sure nothing, nothing untoward has happened since then.
Yeah, I was, after, like I said, speaking with the chief, I'm, I'm confident that the, uh, situation has been rectified and, uh, I don't expect it to.
Occur again.
Reoccur.
So, so we're, we're approving what, the lower water bill meter amount of .003, or what are we doing?
Well, he had a request to lower the rate, and, um...
Which is standard with all other users though, too, right? And it's not like it's a special rate?
Oh, no, it is special. It would be special.
Oh, it is, okay.
Everybody pays according to a formula.
Okay.
Everybody, all users pay.
Right.
Um, if, if you change it, for instance, the, um, current, the last bill that they had, uh, the fire department used approximately, we had to estimate it, um, of the amount used, they used approximately 120,000, just overall, uh, gallons. And if we want to look at the fire department at 120,000, and because the fountain used in excess, they, the fountain used 188,000, which was, obviously, there was a leak. But, um, if you separate out the bill, the fire department is paying about $685, and the depot section of it, the amount that they use, that's 1583, so you can see the difference. That's a lot of money, because they got bumped up to a higher rate also, because the more you use, the more you pay. So they got bumped up. Um, the request is, or the recommendation is to, uh, have the fire department, there would, the fire, finance would still treat them as one user, but you would separate out the bill, the fire department, now that there's a meter there, you know exactly what the fire department uses, and they would pay just like every other user, the same formula. But when it comes to the public space, the, um, community space of the depot, they, if we approve it, would pay a lower amount. Now, the lower amount that was recommended is .003 per gallon, which is the amount that we would reimburse Richmond. So there isn't any, we're not paying, they're not going to pay more, they're not going to pay less, nobody, so that, it would just mean less revenue for the, um, water line account. It won't throw us into deficit, it'll just meet the exact cost that the town paid, or their users paid for water that crosses over to the line.
The only other question I have is, if it's a fountain, the, why shouldn't it just recycle the water? I don't know how it could use more water.
Because, I guess, because it was a leak.
Well, aside from the leak, obviously, but...
The leak was where, where, um...
They, they shouldn't really have any usefulness of that well, right?
Right, so I don't, I don't understand.
They should just recycle the water.
Why they could use that much?
Well, there was a leak.
I mean, a leak is understandable.
Well, they also, they also sprinkle the grass in dry spells, so they do use some water.
It does have sprinkler systems.
Okay.
So, and the, the .03, 003, is the amount that we pay to Richmond? Hopkinton pays to Richmond for the use of the water?
For the exact amount per gallon rate.
Right. Is there any reason, um, is there any issue that we may need to be slightly higher than the exact neutral? The same way that we do like it, um, at Public Works for gasoline and diesel fuel, we pay for the equipment, but if the equipment is owned by the fire department, I'm assuming they are doing all of the upkeep on that equipment?
Well, there, I think that the one cost would be the postage stamp to mail the bill, but you're going to mail the bill to them anyway, so I can't think of a single extra additional cost.
That the fire department is already thinking about, as it's one account.
Right, yeah.
Um, I do believe that the .03 price was just for the depot park.
Right, oh yes, not for the fire department.
Not for the fire department itself, so it's just that little amount that the depot...
That is specifically for?
Yes.
Yeah, my, my question was just, if, if the fire department is picking up every other fee around the park, then that makes sense, um, so we don't have to make up any differences.
No, they're not lowering it for the fire department, just for the public space.
Um, okay.
So there were two, there were two issues. One of them was if you wanted to lower the rate, and the second issue is, do we want to forgive them, in a sense, make the, um, .003 retroactive for the last two bills? From the time that the depot started.
What does that amount to?
Um, that would amount to, let's see, that would be, and the current bill, for instance, the difference would be about eight hu, eight, $900 less that they, that they would owe. They haven't paid the bill. Um, their bill comes over, comes in at 20, it's a lot of money, comes in at, if we, if they had to pay for the, if there wasn't any lowering of the amount, and, well, there is a, there is a bill, it's $2,268.
Okay.
That's what they'd owe. So you separate out the fire department, because we have to estimate, because the meter just went on, and you separate out the depot, and then you lower the, to .003, their total bill would end up being $1,248 instead of $2,268. So the fire department bill will still be 685 currently, it would still be 685 if we lower it, because we're only going to lower it for the, for the depot. But instead of the depot paying $1,583, and you lower it, they would pay $563. So that is a significant, that's, that's, that's a thousand dollars.
Thousand dollars.
Yep.
And who fixed the problem?
Fire department.
Fire department is responsible for that, they fixed...
They had an outside contractor before, and now they're going to be maintaining it themselves.
But I mean, so they have absorbed all of the costs of fixing the pipe as well?
That's part of the deal. When they did the depot square, that they would maintain it.
Mm-hmm. Yep, something breaks, they have to fix it.
Man, I appreciate you guys doing all this work, Tom and Sylvia. I mean, they're their own taxing authority, but, you know, I, I just wish someone from that fire department, Chief Stanley or someone, came up and, they're asking for a thousand bucks.
Well, I asked them, I talked to the chief...
No, just give us five minutes, you have time.
Well, I, I talked to him about it, and I actually had a board member call and say, "Do you really need me to be there?" And I said, "If it becomes a problem, we'll kick it to the next council meeting," and I, I have to admit that they did offer, and I just, I didn't think that they, that they needed to be here. I thought we had the information, and I'll be honest with you, the reason I didn't is because they go to so many meetings, and they're out at all hours, and I...
It's only five minutes, huh?
Well, it's not five minutes. They would have been here for more than an hour. So it's my fault for not insisting someone be here.
I, I think, I think part of this, part of the reason that I would have also appreciated someone being here, is that they are their own taxing district. They can tax their own people for whatever they spend, including this bill. Um, it's not the town bill, it is actually through the fire department and the fire department's water system. And they are a taxing authority, exactly like we are, and they could, um, absorb that. I, I don't think they need to. I understand the problem. Um, I don't see a problem with, um, taking the fees down to the .003 ongoing forward and assisting them on this initial part of the problem. But I do think it would have been polite for them to be here, since they are a taxing district and they could have done it themselves.
A thousand bucks.
Yeah.
And this, you know, as somebody that's been applying, you could be a little...
Look, we have an issue, we're not going to be able to go back to someone else and say, "Well, jeez, we're short a little bit, you know, can you help us out?"
You know, you have the fire department and the district, but, and I, I want to thank Councilman Buck for his work on it, and I did it previously, I realized it, really got into it, and I appreciate it.
It's nothing against you guys, I just wish the representative was here. I wish we were kind of...
But, you know, a lot of people don't realize that fire districts are taxing authorities, and, and most of the stuff, with a rare exception, anything dealing with fire should be in, in their, their budget and not the town, but, uh, it's kind of an unusual event, because I think that was portrayed as a, a joint project between the town and the fire district, if I remember correctly, understand correctly.
And it's, and it's a, the depot square is for the entire town of Hopkinton, not just for the whole valley area.
Yes, it's a public, it's a public space.
Kind of an unusual, more blurred, uh, relationship for, uh, involving in that issue.
So is the council, um, desiring to do both? There are two issues. One of them is to take it down to .003 for their, uh, June 2012, actually, the request is for 2011 and 2012 in four bills in the future. So what would you like to do?
I, I think that's fine. I support that lower rate, um, as long as it doesn't cost us anything extra from Richmond.
Second.
Now, Lisa needs to know what the mo, what the motion is.
Yeah, I'll support the, uh, water use rate of .003 to the fire station for the depot square water usage.
You're making that a motion for, right?
Yes, yes.
And is that for, uh, the current bill and the previous, from the time that the depot square started? No, from 2011 to 2012.
Going forward.
Going forward.
But you know, a lot of people don't realize that fire districts are taxing authorities, and most of the stuff, with a rare exception, anything dealing with fire should be in, in their budget and not the town, but, kind of an unusual event, because I think that was portrayed as a joint project between the town and the fire district, if I remember correctly and understand correctly.
And it's, and it's a, the depot square is for the entire town of Hopkinton, not just for the whole valley area.
Yes, it's a public, it's a public space.
Kind of unusual, more blurred relationship for involvement in that issue.
So is the council desiring to do both? There are two issues. One of them is to take it down to .003 for their June 2012, actually, the request is for 2011 and 2012 in four bills in the future. So what would you like to do?
I, I think that's fine, I support that lower rate, as long as it doesn't cost us anything extra from Richmond.
Second.
Now, Lisa needs to know what the mo, what the motion is.
Yeah, I'll support the water use rate of .003 to the fire station for the depot square water usage.
You're making that a motion for it, right?
Yes, yes.
And is that for the current bill and the previous, from the time that the depot square started? No, from 2011 to 2012.
Going forward.
Going forward from, so it's not past bills?
Correct, just yet.
Right.
Okay. Is there a second?
Sorry?
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So is there, is there, is the council wanting to go back to the June 2011 and the June 2012 water line bills? And have the .003 retroactive for those bills as well?
I would feel more comfortable for Representative King, just, just so I know that it's not going to happen in the future, and see what they did. Are they going to winterize it, or are they going to, they lower the line, lower the frost line or something? I want to hear it, so, that's me.
I
I'm not saying I won't support it, but I just want to hear what they've done to rectify the, you know, the, the pipe, broken pipe.
Do you want
I got it right here. Fire department's completion in September 2009 to fire district's annual water usage for the, for the, 2009, probably in fifteen months, so the park's water usage. This is all just totals and stuff, but I've been trying to find out where it said that.
While I'm doing that, can I ask you a question? And then what is, what is, what does the fire department pay for a gallon of water normally?
They pay, for the first, for the January billing, every user's pays according to their meter size. The meter that they have, they pay for the first 30,000 gallons, and that's in January, that's $175. And then for the next, there's a formula, and then for the next 30,000 to 60,000 gallons, they pay $105. For the next thirty, 60,000 to 90,000, they pay $165. And then from 90,000 to 150,000, they pay $240. And anyone that uses in excess of 150,000 gallons pays at a rate, and these are all different rates, they, it jumps up to .0085 in excess of 150,000 gallons. So it starts out with the meter, you just get, pay one flat rate for the first 30,000, then it jumps to .0035, then it jumps up to .0055, and then it jumps up to .0080, and then the final one is .0085.
How much does a, a normal citizen in a house pay? They would be above the 30,000.
About 208, about 208 dollars for a normal family.
Right, so I mean, it's a, they're above, they're between the 30 and the 60.
A regular
A regular family. And we would assume that the, the depot square should be like a normal family, small family house.
Yeah, I don't know how much they'll use for sprinklers.
How much?
I don't know.
It can't be much.
It's a small area.
I don't know.
Well, it's never been meted, and now it's
We'll find out next year.
So now you'll know exactly what it is.
It's a very small area.
And it should, so it should be greatly, it should be a whole lot less, they've learned their lesson. It'll be a whole lot less, and they will, and they will also have a lower rate.
Can I ask you a question?
Mm-hmm.
On depot square, would it be from gallon number one, not gallon number 30,000?
That's a, that's a good question, we'll address it.
No, it'll be, it'll just be the, the gallons that, from gallon one.
From gallon one.
And for the depot, just the depot.
Just the depot.
That's what I'm saying, so.
Right. There's no formula, it's just .003, whether they use one gallon or 100,000.
That's what they use, where everybody has a minimum, they will, they have three.
Right. Right. Yep.
And they paid six something, didn't they? They paid 654, is that what you said? Is their portion?
The fire, if, if the, if you applied the .003 to their current, their recent bill, the fire department would pay, would have paid about $685.
Okay.
And the depot with this .003 would pay 563. That is if it used 100, that was with 188,000 gallons applied to it. And that, that would have been 563. And if, at the old rate, it would have been 1,500, more than 1,500 dollars. So you can see why they sent a letter.
Oh, yeah.
So we don't want to gouge them, we just want to, you just want to make sure you, you recoup the, the exact amount, your cost, that's all. So there's no profit, there's just straight pay for the, for the expense.
I just would like to see a representative there.
Okay.
Where I need a vote on $1,020.
I will, if you make that a motion, I'll support that. I, I know it might seem like small
Well, you don't need a motion to have somebody here. I'll let them know that in order for them to receive the next two years, the council would prefer some, a representative at the next meeting.
Because we've agreed to the .003 going forward.
It's just a rebate.
Okay.
I appreciate that.
All right. Okay, next up. New business, took care of the hospital, consider ratifying the proposed employee contractual agreements between the clerical and professional technical employee unions. Bill?
Well, thank you. The following is going to be basically an operational impact statement regarding the clerical and professional technical employee union contracts that have already been ratified by the, by the unions themselves. First thing I'd like to do is I would like to thank the town's negotiating committee, spearheaded by Vice President Tom Buck. Also on the committee was our Finance Director Laura Kenyon and our illustrious town solicitor, Patricia Buckley. We did very well, our side was very well organized, we did a lot of preparatory work, and were able to come to an agreement with the union after seven collective bargaining sessions. I think it's very important to note that the two contracts, one for the clerical and one for the professional technical employees, are exactly the same, page by page, word for word. The only thing that is different is the Exhibit A of the two contracts, in the rear of the contracts, because they have different pay grades and different employee classifications. Some of the, there were a lot of changes to the collective bargaining unit. We went over that contract before we started, council solicitor Patricia Buckley, Finance Director Laura Kenyon, and myself, and we went over that contract and basically revised the entire contract in order to eliminate the ambiguous sections and, and improve the grammar in it. They're lengthy contracts, and there are a lot of changes, and I'm going to highlight the significant changes. The first was probationary period, where we, which was amended to increase the additional probational period extension time from three months to six months, not to exceed one year. So there is a initial six-month probationary period, and formerly we had an additional three-month period. We now have a second additional three-month probationary period, not to exceed one year. With respect to seniority, we amended that so that seniority is now defined as the total length of service by an employee in their designated position within the bargaining unit. And basically what that does is that transfers to different positions within the bargaining unit would result in a loss of seniority if it's a different, different job classification. Holidays, we amended to allow employees to receive compensatory time instead of overtime. That benefited both sides, it allowed them a little flexibility, and it allowed us to give them the time off as opposed, as opposed to paying them time and a half overtime. Sick leave. For financial purposes, this was a, a huge significant gain in that sick leave is now going to be accrued per pay period for all permanent full-time employees. Medical insurance, copay premiums were increased from 10, 11, 12% in this three-year contract to 12, 16, and 20%. With respect to wages and longevity, a wage increase for the first fiscal year was 0%. The second fiscal year was 2.5%, and the third fiscal year was 2%. We also included for the first time a job performance management system, so we amended the contract so that the town will conduct annual work performance evaluations of all permanent, excuse me, of all full-time and permanent part-time employees, basically members of the collective bargaining unit, in this agreement to measure the employees' on-the-job work performance every year. In addition, we also included for the first time a section on job descriptions. The town has basically revised between 12 and 15 of its job descriptions, so within the last three years, and we've done that as positions become vacant, when we advertise for the position, we, we write the ad, and we also post the application in a revised job description online. There are many that have outdated job descriptions, and the goal was to put together a committee comprised of an equal number of union and town officials to draft job description for all full-time and permanent part-time employee positions in town. With respect to the overall cost, I'm just going to hit the highlights. The overall cost of the, of the collective bargaining agreement, and Laura Kenyon can address this better than I can if she wishes to, but just to, just to highlight that, over three-year period, the cost is $10,148. If you split that up, the clerical union, which has 16 employees within it, the added increase for three years is $5,300. For the professional technical employees that have six employees in their unit, the overall increase in cost to the town is 4848, 4,848, for a total of $10,148 over three years, which is less than $3,400 per year. So the employees between their medical and their pay raises didn't lose any money, nobody suffered any losses. However, the town's expenses for that three-year contract for 16 employees was minimal at best. And as I said earlier, both of these contracts have already been ratified by the two collective bargaining agreements and, and the two contracts for the unions. Did I miss anything?
I don't think so, I think you hit it, hit it all. Barbara?
We have one employee that has a larger raise than 0.252.
Are you referring to the clerk in the tax assessor's office?
Well, we have one employee that has a step.
Has a what?
A step raise.
Right, it wouldn't be a raise, but it would be an increase.
It's an increase, so I'm trying to, so we do, we have one employee that will be not at 0.252, but will be at 0.452.
And that, yes, and part of the reason for that is she started at a lower rate when she first came in.
Right. And then the other issue is on longevity, can you just explain who gets longevity and who doesn't?
Sure. Do you have a page on that?
No. No, I just want to know generically.
I'm not asking for names.
Well, I meant page.
Well, that's like the last contract, right? We eliminated longevity for any employee, so it's, it would be, longevity would be given to any employees prior to the last contract, because that was a provision in the last contract, Tom, right?
Yes.
Prior to the beginning of the last contract?
Yes.
At the end?
Beginning.
Right. That's right.
Beginning.
Can you state that again?
Page 21?
I'll try, any, any employees who are
Page 21?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah.
So I believe it would be July 1st, 2009, because that was the beginning of the professional and technical, was July 1, 2009.
So my employees hired after that, they do not get longevity?
Yes.
Yes. Section 2, 24.2.
Right, all employees hired prior to June 30th of 2009 shall receive longevity pay increases beginning yearly on the first pay period following the employee's anniversary date of hire as follows, at the five-year mark, 2%, at the 10-year mark, 3%. That didn't change from earlier collective bargain, the earlier collective bargaining agreement, it's just that after July 1st, 2009, there are no provisions for longevity.
At all.
None.
Any other questions or comments?
No, I think, I think over three-year period, $10,000 for all, both union contracts is pretty good. I think just about 68% of that $10,000 is FICA and pension costs, so there's really not a lot of extra stuff in there, over a three-year period. And as Tom mentioned earlier, it's
One penny.
One penny in the mill rate for three years.
In addition to that, and what you say is very true, is that what's difficult to measure now, but will be very important in the future, is that all pot, all future part-time employees, which are employees who work less than 20 hours a week, after July 1st of this year, are no longer entitled to any benefits, wages, but not benefits. So that should save the town a considerable amount of money.
So it's basically a third of a cent per year for the next three years?
Correct.
On the knowledge. Okay. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? I know you thanked everybody, but I want to repeat the thanks and also include you, Bill, for all your hours, and I know, I know you all did spend mornings and afternoons, and it wasn't easy, so we appreciate the work that you've done, thank you. Is there a motion to ratify the proposed employee contract agreements between the clerical and professional technical employee unions and the town of Hopkinton for fiscal year 2012, 2015?
I'll make a motion. I make a motion that we accept the clerical and professional technical employee union contracts for the town of Hopkinton fiscal years 2012 to 2015.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more comments?
Negotiated, so I want to have somebody else.
Is there anyone from the public that wishes to step in or comment?
Can I say something?
Sure.
I'm Dave Housman. Was there any discussion about retirement programs in, in the contract?
There is. Does it, does it retire?
Yes, the retirement, there is a section on retirement, and it was changed. The retirement now reflects the Retirement Act of 2011 that was passed by the General Assembly and initiated by the State Treasurer. That Retirement Security Act of 2011 is, as I said, statutory, and it's for all members of the Rhode Island Employees Retirement System, and all the employees in the town of Hopkinton are in the MURR system, municipal employees retirement system, which is part of the umbrella of the Rhode Island Employees Retirement
Part of the, part of the state system, in other words.
Right.
Exactly.
So it's all regulated by statute.
Good.
It's a 2% defined benefit, which means from employer, and 5% contribution rate from the employee.
Okay.
Correct?
Yes, that, that's really non-negotiable between the union and the town, superseded by statute.
But it's in our favor. It's 2% for the town, 5% for the defined contribution. Defined contributions for the employee, so it's more.
Right.
Yes.
Could I ask, do we know what our pension fund is funded at? Is it, is it funded at 100%? Or, or, is this, you know, do you have a figure, a rough ballpark figure?
The latest?
I'm just, my, I'm guessing around our latest is 80-something percent.
Well, really up there. We're not, we're not 100.
Okay, good.
And the police are over 100%.
That's real good, yeah, appreciate that.
Yeah, well, we don't have any locally administered pension plans in town.
But, but, we're responsible for funding the
State plan.
A state plan, that's right.
Right.
And, and we're 85% or so, which is
For the municipal employees and higher for the police department.
Right.
Yeah, we've really stayed
We're in great shape.
It sounds crazy, but there was a time when we were down by 500,000 for municipal and up by 500,000 for the police, that was a couple of years back. So it was a wash, and since, but that doesn't, you know
Balanced out.
Yeah, so it balances, but, yeah, so you know, they, they estimate what, and they tell us what they want us to pay, and fortunately, we're at the higher end.
Excellent, thanks.
Thank you, good question.
Is there anyone else that wishes to comment? All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Last public forum, is there anyone wishing to speak at the last public forum? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
I move that the Hopkinton Council adjourn in memory of the late Bernice Turnbull Beeler. She is my second cousin, I've never met her, but her parents, let me explain, her parents reen Turnbull's market in Ashway, and she got married before I was born, her sister Shirley Fallon, you might know Shirley, lives in Ashway, and her father was Peter Turnbull, reena store, right on the bridge with Joe Vanabosh for many decades, and his wife was my mother's first cousin.
Oh my god.
So I want to remember her this evening.
Mm-hmm, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.